Hello, good evening everyone. Welcome to the August 31st, 2010 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Hi, Paul. Just Councilmembers Draymond, Friedman.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here. Mr. Draymond did call me just a few minutes ago. Oh, he's in the building.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Quintero, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation delivered by Chaplain Al Garcelazzo Glendale Development Medical Center.
Let us pray. Dear God, we're glad to live in a country where civil and religious liberties are respected and protected. We're also grateful for the news that combat operations in Iraq have ended, yet we know that many of our troops remain in harm's way. We have thousands of men and women serving all around the world. We pray that you will continue to bless them and watch over them, also support their families, and grant them the peace, hope, and understanding that they seek and need. As we meet here tonight, we pray that you will bless us through your presence. May our words and our thoughts reflect your love and your goodness. Amen.
Amen.
What is wrong? There he is.
Mr. Kosakian, may we have your report, please?
Agenda for the August 31st, 2010 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, August 26th, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And will the record reflect that we are joined by Councilmember Draymond?
It does.
Next item, please.
On presentation and appointments.
Before we do that...
Mr. Mayor, if I can, before you get into the business of the agenda, I'd like to ask that Item 5B, no, pardon me, 8B, that's the Walco Group retention, a report by Glendale Water and Power be taken off calendar.
Any objections to removing 8B?
And if we do?
Well, then we'll discuss it, as we do.
No objection.
And then we'll come to a reasoned conclusion. No objection, so we'll take that off and await its replacement on the agenda at a future date. Mr. Kosakian.
Mr. Mayor, and Council also, if I may add, for anyone who was watching the afternoon meetings and noticed that they were not able to view us through their TV screens, we do have the entire afternoon meetings available archived for people to view online on the city's website, and whatever technical difficulties we were having in the afternoon, I've been informed, have been resolved.
Thank you. I know our switchboards were flooded with our fans who were not able to tune into the Housing Authority and Redevelopment Agency, so that...
Depends on your definition of flooded, but sure.
Okay, next item, please.
Three is presentation and appointments. That three is agenda preview for the meetings of September 7th, 2010.
Ms. Beers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for September 7th, there is no housing business agenda items. For the Glendale Redevelopment Agency commencing at 2:30, we have two items under the business agenda. Director of Community Redevelopment and Housing, review of project objectives and update of financial impacts for the Americana brand, and Director of Community Redevelopment and Housing regarding branding San Fernando Road redevelopment project area as a creative corridor. That evening, for the Glendale City Council meeting at 6:00 PM, we have a number of consent items. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is an amendment to the professional services agreement for construction management and inspection services at the Glendale Water and Power Utility Operations Center. Glendale, General Manager for Glendale Water and Power, excuse me, sole proposal received for Grace and Power Plant, Unit Number Five, and this is for the governor and vibration system replacements. Under action items, we have a number of items. Director of Human Resources, proposed ordinance of the City of Glendale providing for a salary supplement and continuation of certain benefits for city employees who are members of the National Guard or Armed Forces Reserves and are called up for active duty. Director of Information Services, this is an emergency purchase to order and provide backup hardware and software implementation services to support the advanced metering infrastructure, AMI Smart Grid Project. Director of Information Services, amendment to the agreement with the Leesys to provide 24/7 support for the AMI Smart Grid backhaul for the city's IT network. And lastly, Director of Public Works, this is the Orange Line Development Authority, Second Amended Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next item.
Item four is City Council and Staff Comments.
Okay, let's start. Ms. Friedman?
Well, this was something that I've debated whether or not I was going to mention, and it's a little bit difficult for me to even bring it up, but I decided that because there's some harm being done out in the community in terms of people being upset and worried, that I would mention this. What's happening is that one of our council regulars, Mr. Herbert Milano, has been distributing a newsletter to small businesses in which he is supposedly quoting me and saying that the council, and myself in particular, are trying to pass a business license tax. Now, it would be one thing if he had paraphrased me, or misinterpreted something that I said, or kind of got it wrong, but in this case, he actually just made up quotes, and he made up the most incendiary quotes that he possibly could, that I didn't say, and said that I said them at the last redevelopment meeting. And what I would say to the public, first, to the people out there who are worried and upset, this is not something that we've discussed, it's not something that we're planning on discussing, it's not on the table. Your buttons are being pushed, so to say. And anybody who goes back and watches that episode, that meeting, on the Internet can see very clearly that, first of all, what we were discussing was the arts fee that very large development projects have to pay, which is 1% for the arts, nothing to do with the business tax, and that I didn't say any of the quotes that Mr. Milano attributed to me. Now, if it was just about me, I can take it, I'm used to that kind of attack, but because I feel that he is targeting business owners who in this economy are very vulnerable, some of them are really struggling and are frightened, and needlessly upsetting them, I felt the need to come here tonight and just set the record straight so that they are reassured, and maybe if they're having any sleepless nights, they can just sleep a little bit easier knowing that this council is not going to do anything to impact our small businesses in any negative way. We are very sensitive to that, and this is not a topic that's even up for discussion. So I hope that that puts this to rest, and if Mr. Milano's listening and has any scruples, he should apologize to those businesses and let them know that he was misrepresenting what I said, misquoting anything that I might have said, and that this is not an issue at this city council right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on what Ms. Friedman said. Mr. Milano's handed out this flyer in Monrose, La Canata, I mean, Montrose, La Crisenta, I understand even downtown Glendale now, and it included me in it too. "We're in an election cycle already, and the dirt's beginning to fly." Just like to read the one paragraph that involved Ms. Friedman and myself. Laura Friedman, at the Redevelopment Agency meeting, took the words right out of Councilman Dave Weaver's mouth, her claim that businesses have been getting a free ride to city services because they don't pay a business tax. A free ride, mind you, as she adapted the talking points previously assigned to Weaver, she forgot that others, with years following the outburst of Weaver, would recognize his words, but this time expressed through the lips of an earnest female council member. Why the attack on business? Why the silence of John Draymond? I have never, ever said we need a business tax in this city. I have said, I said it in 1997, at a Chamber of Commerce Board meeting, if you want to look at various forms of taxation, and they say that we don't have, a business license tax is one of them. Following that, Larry Zarian said the business tax would be over his dead body. I never said I supported it, but if you're going to look at taxation avenues, that's one. Now, Mr. Milano likes to take things and twist them. He did it on Ms. Friedman, and he did it on me. If he can show me the video where I said I want a business license tax, fine. This is where I did my research. This is a Cosmoop report, comes out annually, it shows all the taxes that every city in Southern California puts on. It cost me $500 to buy one before I even ran for council and analyzed all the cities. When I made the statement that there's only five cities in the state of California that don't have a business license tax, it came from this. It didn't mean I wanted one. So, he's lying, but he'll never admit it, and I just hope all the people that are now being approached watch this and understand, we never said what he said we said. On the second item was the Disney Child Care Center. We had people here last week that said all this stuff was going on out the place, construction work, deliveries, everything going on. I went out there last Friday, and I toured the site. Landscapers were putting in the final touch of the landscaping on there. No activity going on, nothing. On Sunday, we received another email, yes, we all did. Two hours later, I was out there again, circling the site. The gates were locked, the place was silent. Two security cars were driving around, looked at me as I drove by. Nobody on the premises at all. One of the individuals that lives there said she heard equipment, equipment moving. For the record, every piece of equipment, including our trash trucks, whenever they back up, they go beep, 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 beep. It's required. And what was going on there is they were picking up trash and stuff and putting it into the barrels or whatever in the parking lot that was closed. That was not construction. The grading and everything, where any of their vibrations could occur, was all done before the end of February. Construction started in January. Since then, there's been no kinds of equipment used there, as a professional engineer that I could say, would be causing the vibration that they say happened on the homes at least 150 feet away from there. They said there's dust, I couldn't see it. I was told one of the homeowners had been out there cutting the grass over the weekend, and dust was flying all over the place because he was trying to use a lawnmower on dirt. So, the other thing that they brought up was about cracks in the homes. Those homes were built between 1927, most of them in 1947, post-war, veterans coming back, the homes were built then. In those days, and I pulled a building permit from 1939, we didn't require any foundation investigations, nothing. You just say, are you using foundation? Are you using piles or piers? Yes. All that area out there was an alluvial fan of the LA River. It's sand, sandy material, subject to liquefaction and settlement. Over the last 60 years, it would be natural for any home to have differential settlement causing cracking. It didn't come from the childcare facility. Those old cracks were patched up, opened up again. So, I see nothing to the complaints at all. It is done. Methods and what was used, I think, was highly proper in what they did. I hope that alleviates some of the concern. I know that Disney will be talking to people again, in fact, they have talked to them, been to their homes, and invited the people to talk to them again. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Draymond?
Two items, Mr. Mayor. Well, I guess since I was mentioned in the Herbert Milano, what are we calling it, business tax gate scandal?
Hit piece, they're called hit pieces.
Hit piece, yes, okay. But I guess I should comment, too. There's a good reason I kept silent when Councilmember Friedman made her mysterious comments about welcoming a business tax to Glendale. Kept silent because she didn't say that. I also kept silent when Mr. Najarian spoke about the world being flat. Oop, wait, he wasn't here, I couldn't have done that. Excuse me, when Mr. Quintero spoke about the world being flat, I kept silent then too, because he didn't say that. It's really easy, folks, to go out and just make stuff up out of thin air, slap some quotation marks around it, and run off to Kinko's, and then run around town saying, "See? Glendale's just like Belle. See? Glendale's an unscrupulous city." What it does show is that, as Mr. Weaver says, an election cycle is on. So Mr. Milano, with his sheaths of paper, ran up to the Crisena Valley and was trying to find a way, in his mind, he thought, perhaps I can separate the business community from Mr. Draymond or Mr. Weaver in an area that is generally favorable to them. My family's had business in Crisena Valley since 1949. I've been on the record since the day I showed my face publicly in this city, long before coming to council. I oppose a business tax in Glendale, have never supported such a thing, never would support such a thing. It's no problem to say that up here, because I've said it umpteen times in a million different forums. However, shall I stand still and pose for you, sir, while you're taking your pictures back there? In any case, it's not even an issue that has been raised on this dais, or in closed session, or in any other forum at this city by any elected official, at least since my joining the council in 2007. But what it really is, is it's just an election tool. You will note that Councilmember Quintero wasn't mentioned in it. Councilmember Mayor Najarian wasn't mentioned in it. Why? Because their seats aren't up at the upcoming election. But Mr. Weaver's seat is up, and my seat is up. And so our names are featured prominently, and I'm sorry, Councilmember Friedman, it really wasn't directed at you. It was just using a comment you said that he wanted to bend in a way, so he could focus on me and Mr. Weaver. That's why he used our names. That's why he underlined our names. So, you know what, after all that effort and Mr. Milano running around, as he put it, to hundreds of businesses, so four people came up to me on Sunday and said, "Hey, John, what's this all about?" And I said, "Well, you know, we have this fellow who comes to the council every week, and he's with us all day long. We hear from him about 40 minutes every day, every Tuesday, and he's campaigning." So, anyway, that was sort of the end of that, but I just wanted to get that on the record. Now, to a serious matter, something we can actually take seriously. Mr. Mayor, I was informed, and I'll need the help of the city manager, actually, so we can get a liaison in development services kind of area, that can work with both the Montrose Shopping Park Association and the Montrose Verdugo City Chamber of Commerce. Five names, as many of you know, there's a Vietnam War memorial in Montrose. It is the oldest, or the first, Vietnam War memorial in the country, and it was dedicated in 1968 on Flag Day. And it carries the names of those killed during the Vietnam conflict who were residents of the Crisena Valley, Crisena Canata Valley. So it includes service people from La Canata Flint Ridge, La Crisena, Montrose, even Tahunga as well. And five confirmed names have come forward that never made it onto the wall there. They are on the wall in Washington, DC, and their hometowns have been identified and confirmed, and I don't believe they're on our, I know for fact, they're not represented out here on Memorial either. And I have the names, and what is going on right now is that Bill Dodson, who is the caretaker of that memorial, and a wonderful, wonderful man who has looked after that monument since Frank Roberts passed away, and who is himself a veteran and a hero himself, has been working with Albeck Company in Burbank to find the original makers of the bronze plaques that are on the memorial, because they want to find the original maker so they can have these plates added. I'd like to ask if we can supply any information, if possible, that the city might have related to the company that was used then, A, and B, if we can ask, whether it's Jackie Bartlow or whoever our rep is to the business community up there, to work with both the MSPA and the Montrose Verdugo City Chamber of Commerce, who are both partners in looking after that site, caring for it, and providing the stewardship for that memorial, to make sure that those plaques are added, and that they're added properly, and that this is vetted properly, and that both groups are involved, so no group or no individual member of those groups ends up feeling slighted. And then I'd turn to my colleague, Mr. Quintero, and ask for some assistance from him with regard to the memorial site here. And again, my thanks to Bill Dodson, this is sort of a missing puzzle piece for many years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Quintero?
Well, as the president of the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Airport Authority, now known as Bob Hope Airport, I want to personally thank the members of the Burbank City Council. Yesterday, or yesterday, last week, they approved the Regional Intermodal Transportation Center, and this is a huge step forward at Bob Hope Airport. It's a structure that's going to combine parking, rail service, accessibility, rental car facilities, bus services, a CNG, a natural gas fueling station, and a people mover. The people mover would go to the existing terminal. It's going to be powered by rooftop solar panels, and it'll also be built to withstand a major earthquake. The idea being that this could be the focus of disaster response activity on a regional basis. We have the runways, the rail lines, et cetera. And so the Burbank City Council approved it last week, did a wonderful job of explaining to Burbank residents, and what I'd like to do maybe in the next couple of weeks is actually have a brief presentation, so Glendale residents can get a feel for what's going to be built at the airport. I gave two of the members a big hug, and when I see the other two that voted for it, I'll do the same. I mean, it always takes a bit of political courage to do anything related to the airport there in the city of Burbank, and they certainly showed it. But it's a very positive project, because in fact, it's going to take car traffic out of Burbank's streets. Combining this facility will absolutely reduce the traffic impacts around the airport, and then hopefully, in the long run, as more and more rail service picks up here in California, there'll be less flights, especially to the Bay Area and sort of shorter destinations that now take off from the airport. So, thank you very much, Burbank City Council. Then the second thing I would like to talk about, I attended a ACT conference, which is a conference of professionals that are involved in traffic mitigation measures and transportation design measures, et cetera. There was a staff member from Glendale that was there. It was a very positive conference, and I hope some of those ideas, I'm going to be speaking to Jono and some of the reps here at the city. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Since we're dispelling some of the untruths put forth by Mr. Milano, I would like to welcome all the students at the Glendale Unified School District back to school. Yesterday was their first day of school, including my son, Christopher, who is a happy camper at Rosemont Middle School, eighth grade.
One day.
You know, there were some rumors about him going somewhere else, or whatever, but... And as it often happens, when students return to school, their teachers ask them, "What did you do this summer, Johnny?" Well, I spent the last week in Korea, as many of you heard, and I do have some photos that I think are very interesting, and some are enlightening. If we could cue those up?
It was lightning.
I attended on behalf of our sister city association with the city of Gosong, and wow, what a city council chamber they have, isn't that? No, that is their national assembly. That's the, just kidding, that is the national assembly. They only have one house in their government. They may expand to a senate-type, a bicameral system. The gentleman in the middle is Congressman Lee. I'm next to him, and that's Chang Lee, our Planning Commissioner to the far right, and our assistant, who is with the Sister City program, Professor Choi on the far left. Next, please. And there we are, inside the building itself. It's a very nicely decorated building in a certain Asian style. We are outside, that's more or less the mall, if you would analogize it to outside the US Congress. It's a wide, open area, park-like area. That's Seoul, the city of Seoul in the background, parts of it. That's the actual parliament building. Twenty-four columns representing the 24 segments of the year. Next, please. So when I got there, I was so hungry, and they sat me down, and I was ready to dig into some sausage and steak and some chicken on a Korean barbecue, until they informed me, "That's not sausage, and that's not chicken, and that's not steak." The sausage-looking items are actually cow intestines. The thing that looks like beef is cow heart, and the chicken-looking item is actually the cow stomach muscle. But it's a very unique, you know, they put the barbecue right in front of you, and if you've attended Korean barbecue, you know what I mean. They've got this huge vent that comes right down, and as you can see, it's sucking up all the smoke. And it all tasted very good, except the intestine was a little bit fatty. The flavor was good, but just very fatty. And there we are, you can see that thing that extends down and draws all the smoke in. Next, please. This is the city of Daegu in central Korea. Next, please. And we're there, meeting with the mayor of Gimpo. And the mayor of Gimpo, Gimpo's a city very similar to Glendale in size, about 220,000. They neighbor Seoul, so oftentimes they're the little brother of Seoul, and often get overlooked in a lot of the planning and a lot of the recognition. They would like to be our sister city, and that request is working its way through the Sister City Association. So we had a little sit-down meeting, and there I am, not understanding much. Of course, it was all conducted in Korean, and look how nicely they bow to their elected representatives. We're exchanging gifts. Well, that's a great custom. Next, please. And there we are, flying the city flag. We gave that to them as a gift. They're part of our delegation, and they're very hospitable. I mean, look what they did. I mean, you know, "Welcome, here comes the mayor," and flowers, and a lot of attention. So they're very committed to developing relations. In English as well. This is a traditional Korean restaurant. We're standing right outside the door, shoes off, and you sit on the floor. And that's a more traditional dish, with mushrooms and sprouts and some rice cakes. The food was all very healthy. Next, please. A noodle dish... A noodle dish, spicy. Next, please. And there we are, toasting with tea. We're drinking tea, and it's only 12:00 noon. And they were so nice that they named a waterway after me. I'm saying, "You guys can't do this." There it is. I said, "Are you sure you want to call it Ara?" They said, "Yes, we insist, Ara." So that's a picture of the waterway, the canal connecting the West Sea and the Han River. And these guys don't fool around. When they want to build something like that, which has to be close to a, oh, I can only hazard a guess, probably close to $500 million project with a marina, they just get down and do it. They don't fool around. They start digging. Some of the environmental issues may be overlooked, but they don't mess around. Here we are, signing in to visit the governor of the province, Mr. Lee and myself, and some traditional Korean architecture. Next, please. And this is why we have a sign ordinance in Glendale. Mr. Hwangani, do you see that? Pretty interesting. I was like, "Whoa." You know, you're not sure, even if that was written in English, I'm not sure I could read any of it, but it's, that's what happens when you go unfettered. Some of the countryside in Korea, very green and lush, and you either have intense urban cities and you have agriculture. You don't have suburbs. There's no sprawl, which is a very unique concept. Next, please. And here we are. We were so important, they gave us the diplomatic limousine, and we were driving through. And I understand they do this for all the mayors and all the dignitaries from Glendale and presumably other cities. And there we have our police escort on the way to Gosong. These are carvings by a zen master, and they're designed to ward off evil spirits. So I have an order for about five of them. We're going to place them right in front of the council dais here. There is the zen master who does the carvings himself, a very interesting fellow. Next, please. This is the mayor of Gosong, Mayor Lee, who gave us a great welcome. Next, please. This is a modern farmhouse in Korea with a rice paddy, rice patties essentially all around it. Very, very interesting architecture, traditional, yet modern at the same time. Gosong sits on an inland bay, much like San Francisco Bay. There's a lot of industry, but yet there's a lot of just open, green spaces. And it was a very beautiful morning, a little bit foggy, but that was the view from the room that we were staying at. Again, some of the inland bay. This is their dinosaur park. I think we've seen different pictures of it. They found dinosaur fossils, and they developed their entire city branding around those fossils. And they have expos and exhibits throughout the year, and this is their theme park. This is a bridge over the Han River in Seoul. This is morning rush hour. It's a very crowded city, five or six million people, but they get along pretty well. And here I am, boarding the high-speed rail. The lady to my right is warning me that the doors are going to close any second now. This is called the K rail, and it travels approximately 200 miles an hour from Seoul to the southern cities. There's a bridge that caught my eye, and it struck me as, I think, one of the designs that were submitted for the bridge over the LA River, that type of suspension bridge. So that is certainly in use, and you can see what it actually looks like in practice there. Next, please. And there we are, back to the beginning. The Korean government is very interested in the Korean community and Glendale as a whole. The Koreans living outside of Korea are permitted to vote in the next presidential election. And the last presidential election was a very close vote, and they realize that there is a swing vote, and picking up votes in the Glendale, La Croix, Senna, and Los Angeles area could very well mean the difference between victory and defeat for some of the candidates. So when I was describing that to Congressman Lee, I said, "Well, you know, your candidate that you support should come out to Glendale." Next thing I knew, I was given a meeting with her. She's the daughter of the former president, President Park. Her name is Gun Hi Park, and she is very likely to be the next president of Korea. Speaks English very well, a very gracious lady. And no sooner had I met with her and finished the meeting than her main opponent called and said, "Hey, you know, who's this guy that's in town?" And they said, "Well, it's, you know, Mr. Najarian from Glendale. Well, I want to meet with him too." And this was the governor of the province, and I discussed, again, the Korean community. I told him we've got a very vibrant Korean community in the area. And I said, "Well..." He says, "Oh, so you met with Gun Hi Park?" I said, "Yes, I did. She's thinking of coming to visit Glendale." And he turned and said a few words to his associates, and he says, "Well, I am coming to Glendale. I'm coming in October." So we may have a visit from a governor from one of the Korean provinces. We'll see if that comes through, but we may have to do some planning in case he decides to come out. But all in all, they're very gracious people. They're very driven. They're very determined, and they've basically rebuilt that country from a devastation of Japanese occupation and the Korean War in a matter of 60 years. So I really got a better understanding of the drive and the commitment that we see from some of our Korean members of our community, from their schoolchildren all the way up to the parents and the business owners. So it was a very great trip. I know Mr. Quintero was there. Ms. Friedman is going to be traveling in a few weeks there, so I just wanted to give, refresh Mr. Quintero's fond memories and give Ms. Friedman a little preview and let everyone know what I did on my summer vacation. So, thank you.
Well, I just wanted to add, that wasn't tea they were toasting with, no matter what.
Oh. Green tea. Was green tea. Okay, thank you. I think, are there any comments from staff? Okay, let's move on to the next item, please.
Mr. Mayor and Council, item five is consent items, including the minutes following your routine and may be acted upon by one motion. A member of council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before a motion is proposed. There was one, two cards submitted, one for 5C and one for 5D.
Mr. Mayor, I'm under the consent calendar.
Second. 5A and B with a second. Roll call, please.
5B or 5D?
5A and B have been moved and seconded.
5A and B, yes. Council members, Raymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
5C, please.
5C is chief of police regarding authorizing the Glendale Police Department to spend grant funds awarded to the County of Los Angeles Real Estate Fraud Prosecution Program. At C1 is resolution approving Glendale Police Department's expenditure of 15, I'm sorry, $150,000 grant funds designated for the investigation of fraudulent real estate transactions. At C2 is a resolution appropriating $150,000.
And I do have a card from Mr. Asatur Bagdassarian.
Hi, sir.
Hello.
I'm sorry. I was in Russia. I supposed to go to see one car. I am auto mechanic, auto repair, but I was trying to here, and this is first time in my life. It's kind of like dream. I live in Glendale almost over 30 years, and I live in my house 14 years with my family, and I like Glendale. And I pay my mortgage, my tax, and I try to be, I'm American Armenian, and I am proud. And also, I try to be, with my knowledge, my every sense, every human things, I try to be really follow all the law and also complete my lifetime situation like for the nature, like myself and I teach my family, we never throw anything, any paper to the ground. I like to keep nature clean and my city clean, and everywhere, in case I see some, say, garbage or waste, I will take picture and I show some of the friend or some, and I try to pick up even then. That's my, they teach me, my parents, they teach me like that.
Okay.
Long story short, they sold the bank, they sold my house. They did fraud. Mortgage company, they did fraud. They sold my house behind me. I was doing modification, and I have all the proof, and I pay my mortgage on time before this economic, and I trust my cousin. I lost my business because he did fraud, and the bank, same thing. They did fraud, and I am almost in the street. I don't have anywhere to go, and I follow the law. I file my paperwork, and I go to the Glendale court. I follow any paperwork they needed. But Judge Dahl, he wants to evict me. I don't know what I did wrong, but why they have to evict me from my house? I live in Spahite for 14 years, and I did my best to keep my house clean, and neighbors, they know me. Everybody, they like me. They don't want me to leave from there. I file anything I want, but Judge Dahl, he wants to evict me. Please, I am asking, I need to get my house back with my name because they did fraud, and I am in bankruptcy. They didn't honor jurisdiction, bankruptcy, minute, file, removal. I did everything. What should I do? What else I should? I go to FBI to investigate. I go to police station. I go everywhere to keep my house.
Thank you, Mr. Bagdassarian. Why don't we have someone from staff contact you and see what we're talking about here, whether it's a criminal issue which has some relationship to the agenda item regarding accepting grant funds?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And in addition, might I suggest that if it's appropriate that you connect him with Neighborhood Legal Services, and I know does help people with these sorts of issues.
I go everywhere. Nobody take my case because they are asking $5,000, $10,000.
Neighborhood legal services will not charge.
Nobody take my case.
Mr. Najarian, Mr. Mayor, do we have a telephone number?
I have hundreds of number. I write it down time.
Mr. Bagdassarian, I'm going to give your card to the clerk, and please give your number, and we can see if we can have someone that will help you.
Well, no, he did meet with the police department. They didn't see a criminal issue here, but we'll try and get him in touch with somebody who can help him.
Thank you for opportunity.
Thank you very much.
This is my country. My life is here, and I like to protect the law. I have the law.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The law should protect me also.
We're going to see if we can give you some direction. Thank you. I don't have any other cards on 5C. Are there any questions from council on this item? Is there a motion?
Move 5C.
Second.
So, did you want to address us on this issue?
Yeah, I put a card for 5C. I don't know how it got mismanaged. I took the liberty of walking up. Hope that's okay.
Oh, here you go. CR Legal?
Senior.
Senior. Yes, I do have your card.
Right, thank you. I do apologize for the extra liberty I took, but I was informed by the secretary that she would make sure my card was given in time. But first, I'd like to say I appreciate the honor of being before you to speak. It's always a privilege that we take for granted, but it's not the same in other countries, as you probably found out. It's not the same. And I appreciate further you being willing to consider the chief of police request for allocating funds for a very, very needed purpose in LA County. As you know, we're in the recession, and a lot of my colleagues and political friends and associates, they're telling me that there's a meltdown, meaning that there's chaos in the business world. And the courts are a little bit more tolerant, but there's chaos in the courts in terms of crimes, criminal conduct, white-collar crimes, et cetera. And I'm new to Glendale. I've been here less than a year. I'm a registered voter, and I enjoy the city as I've seen so far, and I'm impressed. Obviously, your followers and yourself have done an excellent job in conducting the city and in promoting the business and commerce. I even went to one of your neighborhood movies, outdoor movies. It was delightful in Montrose. We saw John Wayne Airport movie where they told the passengers to unload your possessions or die in the ocean. It was quite a message. If you're facing survival, unload your possessions and save yourself. But getting back to the issue I wanted to address, and that is the chief being allocated $150,000, that might be able to look into 15 fraud in white-collar crime, home modification, as one of the other gentlemen spoke about his home being foreclosed for, which I'm familiar with. There is a growing problem in the foreclosure of homes in LA County, and there is real and there's really criminal conduct, but it's difficult to discover and investigate. And I think the approval of this allocation of funds would be very helpful to start to unravel some of the crime patterns. And I think when you do approve it, I think maybe one of the first houses would be Mr. Bagdassian or Dr. Bagdassian, as he calls himself. He works on, I guess, the previous mayor of Carr and other officials. He met with Mayor, Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors, and spoke with Sheriff Baca. Everyone is concerned about the homeowner because that's the basic ingredient to our society, is keeping healthy families and keeping the home intact. And one home being destroyed could have a ripple effect to maybe 25, 30 homes. We don't realize it, but that's the effect that goes on. And especially when it's fraud, meaning that there's fraud, you're altering deeds before you record them, not having proper notes, or fraudulent transactions in the loan modification.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
I'm almost out of time.
That beep was your time. Inspiring.
They usually give you a buzz with another councils, but I do want to say, I do appreciate the opportunity. I do encourage you to approve those funds. I do encourage the police department to take home fraud serious, and if they are able to prosecute a few of the perpetrators of these type of crimes, I think it would send a very strong message.
Thank you.
At least in Glendale, they won't tolerate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you first.
And I should say also, my daughter spent a year in Korea, and she knows what you're talking about.
Okay.
And she enjoyed it.
Great. Wonderful country. Thank you. I don't have any other cards on this item.
I'm move 5C.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Straman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
5D, please.
5D is director of community services and parks regarding proposed park development project at 812 South Maryland Avenue. At D1 is motion amending the existing contract with David Wall's Design DVD, Costa Mesa, contract number C104898. TAD Design Development Construction Document, bidding construction, administration phases to the contract for the amount of $189,900, inclusive of reimbursable expenses and a 10% contingency of $18,990, for a total of $208,890, and authorizing city manager to execute the amendment.
Thank you. I have a card from Nancy Kent.
Nancy Kent, resident of southeast Glendale. And before I mention my park comments, I'd like to say that there have been a couple of speakers tonight who spoke on this microphone, and they were standing so far away from the microphone, it was extremely difficult to hear what they were saying in the back. So I don't know how the acoustics are up there, but if you notice that somebody is hard to hear, please encourage them to get closer to the microphone, and I may overcompensate right now, but, okay. My name's Nancy Kent, I've already said that. Okay, regarding this park at Maryland, I drive past there every day, and usually on park projects, I suggest that the city keep it simple, but there are some wonderful design elements going into this park. Exercise stations and swings and... and swings and garden plots, so bring it on. Uh, I just have two suggestions. Uh, it includes a trellis shade structure and, as I always request on parks, if you're going to put in a shade structure, I wish that it would be, provide the most shade possible and make it a solid shade structure rather than a trellis. And if you're worried about people moving in and setting up housekeeping, if you put in a solid roof, a solid shade structure, uh, I would suggest putting a fence around this park like Palmer Park has so that it can be closed at night if you're worried about people getting too comfortable there. Oh, um, so is it possible to have it fenced like Palmer Park? Last thing is, it says it will have a decorative rock wall and rock edging. And the Elk Mini Park has decorative rock features, but they have the consistency of plaster. So with people using the park, they get the, the, the decorative rocks get chipped and I've heard from the city that the chips can't be repaired. So it just has a lot of chips. I hope that this decorative rock wall and rock edging will be of a more substantial material that doesn't get chipped. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Starber, do we get a, another crack at this park when we come by with some final design issues? I think this is, has not been approved as a final.
Well, we did bring you the, the design. Um, this was a result of 15 community meetings we had with the community and it was, um, just all based on community needs and, and feedback. Uh, but we can certainly bring it back and show you the.
Did we bring the design to the council originally?
Yes.
Okay, and they gave us feedback and authorized us to go to bid?
Yes.
So it has not gone to bid yet?
It's gonna, no, it hasn't gone to bid. Now it's in the construction documents.
Okay, so we're working on construction documents, but I think our sense was you'd approve the concept design and we were prepared to do construction documents and go to bid. Unless you want to see it again?
Please, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it will be coming back for approval of plans and specifications for certain.
Right.
We'll see.
We'll have one more chance to look.
Well, although we, you will, but at that point, we will have completed the construction drawings. So if you want to see it earlier than that, we should get it in as quickly as possible.
Okay. Well, then let me just give that.
The, the point on the rocks is well taken. I hadn't, I hadn't heard that about Elk, but I think we should look into the materials that were used, make sure we're using, if not real rocks, a very hard material that'll hold up. And I'm not sure about the trellis.
And I guess the issue of sufficient shade.
There is a trellis in there. And the shades, yeah, uh, there will be shade.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Drayman?
Well, about the shade structure, the only thing I wanted to say is that, um, we have had, excuse me, we've had feedback from some of the other projects we have done in recent, we've had the feedback recently about some of the other parks we've done. And I think that's possibly the ones that Ms. Kent is, uh, is talking about where some of the feedback from the public has been even at the, even at the podium, which is that, you know, if it's, if it's drizzling, it's unusable, or if it's a grizzly day, it's unusable, or when it's exceedingly hot, it, it doesn't really necessarily do the job on some of the other parks. And I think it's something to look at. I think her point is well taken. I think we should at least look at it and make sure that it's something substantial enough that it does the job when we actually have weather in.
Right. And there is a trellis and we'll make sure it is covered. Yeah.
Well, let's, we need to be clear then because I, I suspect if it's a trellis design, it's not going to accomplish that. So if we have to look and include an option in the bid, we can certainly do that.
And, and, and that's just me. I don't know.
We'll, we'll work on it.
The other four council members may be somewhere else with this entirely, but I do recall that. We've discussed this issue in the past and we have had people, residents here that have, uh, mentioned, oh, by the way, it's a beautiful park, but we wish that the, the coverings were something more solid. So for whatever it's worth.
Very good. What does Mr. Ahern have to say about this? Oh, I'm just kidding. You looked so content there, Mr. Ahern. Um, okay, any other, any other comments? We'll take a motion?
I'll move 5D1.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Montero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Thank you. Let's move on to the next item.
This would be the portion for oral communications.
Okay, this is a three-minute, the portion of oral communications for announcements of items of general public interest. First card I have is from Kurt Sawitzkas.
Uh, Mayor Najarian and the members of the council, uh, I'm Kurt Sawitzkas. I'm a member of the board of directors of Stepping Stone Players. The Stepping Stone Players are Glendale's Diamond Award-winning community theater, uh, we're a nonprofit group and we're celebrating our 10th anniversary. We are celebrating that by staging a musical Willy Wonka at the Hoover Auditorium for three weekends this September. Uh, we're going to have a live orchestra, great dancing musicians, uh, singing. Uh, we're mixing a lot of kids with adults, pro actors with amateurs. We're, we're all about bringing the community together and teaching them something about the arts here and putting on a wonderful performance. We've actually got a video that we could show, uh, from some of our earlier rehearsals. Hold your breath. Hold your breath. Make a wish. Count to three. Come with me and you'll be in a world of pure imagination. Take a look and you'll see.
The night's.
Through your imagination.
This is our 10th, what they call our 10th season and this promises to be, uh, one of our biggest productions.
We've got a cast of over 50, a live orchestra at the historic Hoover Theater. It's going to be family fun for everyone.
Sweet young misses, soft and creamy, completely dreamy, or chocolate. I'm Christopher Antikaya and I'm the director of Willy Wonka, head of Stepping Stone Players. And having been the youngest ringmaster of the Ringmaster Circus, I know how it is to run a giant show like this. Chris, our director, told me that we're going to be flying. The Oompa Loompas will look exactly like the original with the orange traces, wigs, you know. Five golden tickets?
Yeah, food. Augustus eats food.
Hey Daddy, I want an Oompa Loompa! But only one will take my place to make new candy dreams come true. Get your golden ticket now for the Stepping Stone Players' performance of Roldolz Willy Wonka. Look for the golden ticket coupon, enter the coupon code right there on our website. Golden ticket discounts are good until September 6th. Regular ticket price is $18. With the golden ticket, everybody in the family can buy a ticket for $12. Ladies and gentlemen, children of all ages in Glendale, Burbank, greater Los Angeles, come see Willy Wonka starting September 10th.
And thank you. We want to thank the council and, uh, George Chapchan of, uh, Community Services and Parks for helping us to distribute our golden coupons and putting up our posters. Uh, also Cindy Cleary in the library. Uh, you can find our, all these materials in the children's sections of the libraries. Uh, and if you can't find any of these, of course, you can just go online directly, steppingstoneplayers.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Drayman?
Well, I have to comment. Many years ago, when the world was young, uh, I used to work with Christopher Antikaya, who I saw in the, in the, uh, in the video there. Uh, so, and I guess I should plug his book, Ringmaster. Uh, Christopher, Chris was a former, um, ringmaster of, uh, youngest ever of Barnum and Bailey's, uh, greatest, greatest in the world circus. Anyway, uh, fine, fine performer. So I guess now I have to go, uh, but I would anyway. Uh, and it is a great facility. So thank you and, uh, please tell Mr. Antikaya I said hello.
Thank you. Linda Burns.
Mayor Najarian, excuse me. Members of council, my name's Linda Burns and with me are the Women Achievers of Glendale. Possibly Burbank, possibly Pasadena. We would like to invite the city council and staff, businesses in the community to join in a celebration of our local Women Achievers. Business Life Magazine will be announcing the top 20 Women Achievers over the past 20 years along with this year's cover honorees at a very special Women Achievers Gala on September 22nd at 6 o'clock, the reception and dinner at the Hilton Los Angeles in Glendale. It now comes to the wonderful word, all these women are extraordinary and the awards recognize the leaders in Burbank, Glendale, and Pasadena. We invite you to reserve your tickets today to become a table sponsor, or you can contact us for information at 818-240-7088. We look forward to seeing all of you on September 22nd at the Glendale Hilton. Once again, we would like to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. And would you like to say anything? Would you like to join in?
Uh, we are inviting everybody in the community to participate in the Business Life Women Extraordinaire. They're picking 20 women out of the 20 years that they've been doing this. And, uh, we would like to have everybody, uh, to join us. It's a great business opportunity, business network, and it's going to be September 22nd at the Hilton.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Just tables of 10, $75 a person, and please try and, and get a table together of your best friends. Uh, there'll be many nonprofits. Uh, we really welcome you to come and hope to see you there.
Thank you. Leon Mayor?
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the council and staff. I'm Leon Mayor from the Glendale Library and the Friends of the Library, and I already feel guilty because we have an event for September 29th. And I'd like the urge of public to give priority to the event of the ladies, uh, getting these awards on the 22nd. And if you, for any reason, uh, are not going to attend that event, please consider coming to the library to welcome Bob Hope back to, uh, Glendale, uh, Wednesday evening, September 22nd at 7 o'clock. Now, Bob Hope has been here in 1946 and, uh, Ms. Hammond told me he was here for the reopening of the Alex Theater in 1980. And Bob Hope cannot make it tonight. I mean, he cannot make it on the 22nd, but one of his famous gag writers is going to be here. His name is Bob Mills and, uh, Bob has written a book called The, uh, Gag Masters, The Gag Makers, the, uh, tribute to Bob Hope's incredible gag writers. And Bob Mills has been a gag writer for 17 years for, uh, Mr. Hope. And this should be a great evening for those who, uh, are able to come and do not go to the women's event. Uh, it's free, parking is validated, and we're looking forward to, uh, people, uh, coming there and joining, uh, look back in the history of Bob Hope, that incredible person everybody knows and loves. Now, as far as Willy Wonka is concerned, we're not in conflict with Willy Wonka. He's gonna, that show will be going on other than on the 22nd of September. So I, of course, urge people to go to see the Willy Wonka Stepping Stone, uh, production. And, uh, as far as the laugh makers are concerned, uh, Larry Zarian is going to interview Bob Mills on his, uh, program on the 9th of September, 7 o'clock. That's channel, uh, 380. And that's about it. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any other cards for this portion of oral communications. Let's move on to the next item, please.
Item number seven on, under adoption of ordinances, 7A is ordinance authorizing and approving a lease of city-owned real property to Los Angeles SMSA Limited Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless, granting a one-time exemption from ordinance number 5692. This was offered on August 24th, 2010 by Councilmember Weaver.
Mr. Weaver?
I'll move 7A.
Second.
Other questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Montero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Next item, please.
At A Day, under action items, is chief of police regarding inmate telephone services and management agreement. At A Day 1 is motion authorizing execution of a contract with legacy inmate communications to provide inmate telephone and maintenance services for the city of Glendale Jail.
Okay. Is there a, uh, anyone desirous of a report on this item?
I'll make the motion, but I just had a question. We've heard about inmates having cell phones inside the jail and being allowed to authorize murders, whatever, from inside. In our jail, do we allow anything like that? Can they have cell phones or is this going to be the only mechanism?
Mr. Lopez, why don't you introduce yourself and tell the council what you do for Glendale?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, my name is Juan Lopez. I'm the city jail administrator. Um, with regards to your question, uh, with cell phones, we don't allow cell phones in the, in the jail facility.
The only mechanism they will have is with this if we pass it.
Absolutely. And they would have to, uh, basically utilize the phones that are inside the facility, which are monitored. Uh, yeah.
That's all I want.
Sure.
I'll move 8B1.
Second.
8A1.
8A1.
Oh, 8A1.
Thank you. Is there a second for 8A1? Second.
Thank you. Seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Montero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Uh, the next item is 8B that was taken off calendar. Uh, so let's move on to the next item.
Mr. Mayor, that brings us back to the five-minute portion of oral communications where discussion is limited in time. It's not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision and the city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
Thank you. First speaker is Margaret Hammond, followed by Charles Hooker.
Evening, Your Honor. There, members of the city council, staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond, a longtime resident of Glendale. Uh, first off, I have something to say about, um, there being no small business license fees. I personally think it'd be a good idea. It'd be one way that the city would have income. And secondly, it would be a way of controlling what businesses open in the city and, uh, just seem to open up and do their thing and there doesn't ever seem to be any control on it. Uh, they can do what they want, uh, it appears, because if there isn't any, uh, nobody to make sure that they're following the rules of, uh, whatever business they're setting up, that they're doing it in the proper manner. I think it would be a good idea. But anyway, that's me. And then the other thing that I always, that makes me laugh too, is the fact that, um, what about apartment, uh, the tenants? They have to pay trash fees for pickup even though apartment owners, uh, pay for the dumpster pickup. So there's, there's double dipping. So why worry about, business fees can't be that high to ask for. Then secondly, I'd like to know what's the use, um, of the city setting rental fees and, uh, for the use of auditoriums and parks, et cetera, if special groups can come to the city council and ask the city to partner with them, with their event and, uh, giving back half the rental fees and half the police costs. Hello? Why bother setting the fees in the first place then? And after all, if some of the people, some of the groups or the majority of the groups have to pay the full fees, why should there be, uh, just certain groups that are given special, um, consideration that they don't have to pay the full amount? I don't think that's fair. Then secondly, I'd like to know what's the use of the city setting rental fees and for the use of auditoriums and parks, et cetera? If special groups can come to the city council and ask the city to partner with them, with their event, and giving back half the rental fees and half the police costs? Hello? Why bother setting the fees in the first place, then? And after all, if some of the people, some of the groups, or the majority of the groups have to pay the full fees, why should there be just certain groups that are given special consideration, that they don't have to pay the full amount? I don't think that's fair. And then the other thing is, I would like to see the figures, for instance, for the actual cost of policing some of these affairs, what it's actually costing. Because we want to make sure that the city is not going in the hole for these things. There's no reason that we should be subsidizing these events if they're making money and we're paying for them. And then, talking about the sign ordinance, again and again, which I'm against, of course, the signs being allowed all over the city, have been for years. I was one of the people that led the charge against signs on brand and so forth. But yet, special people are exempted, such as the Americana. They can have all the signs they want. The rest of the merchants are not allowed. And again, here we are. Why do we have special? Why are some of us not as well-treated as citizens as other people are? And then relating to the people over there where that Disney childcare place, I talked to those people. They live there. They live there 24 hours and have had to put up with what's been going on. And if I'd have had that, I mean, I would have been here every week ripping up the city council over what happened to them, what has been happening to them. It's all right for you and me, as I said, we live away from it. I live up on the hill, you live up on the hill, wherever you live. And yet, so you don't have to put up with it day in and day out, just like the people over there and that had that flyaway for all that time, Pelliconee. I mean, it was horrendous. I had friends in there, they were practically on the verge of nervous breakdowns with the noise and the dirt and the construction, whether you're an engineer or a bookkeeper or whatever you are. People have a right, if they pay for their homes, they have a right to enjoy them and have quality of life. Just because it's one, you go at a time when maybe not working on a Sunday, but the people that live there, they have to put up with it 24 hours practically, from what I understand talking to them. And I don't, and it was written up in the Orange County Register, have had several articles about that particular construction going on. So believe me, we'll be sticking up for those people. There are homeowners in the City of Glendale, some of them are, I mean, we have people that are three and four generation citizens that are homeowners, have paid their taxes and their dues over the years and supported this city. So therefore, they are entitled to be heard and to have their quality of life as much as the rest of us enjoy the quality of life in Glendale, the good life, as I say. I enjoy my life in Glendale, but it would be terrible to have to suffer what they are going through. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Charles Hooker, followed by C.R. Legal Senior.
My name is Charles Hooker. I'm a lifelong resident of Glendale. My father and mother came to Glendale 1919, 1925, and resided in the great city of Montrose. The reason I'm asking, I want to ask a couple of questions. I noticed in the Glendale news press, our mayor, he has just returned from Korea. I thought he was still visiting over there in the Soviet satellite former country. It's nice to have the frequent flyer miles. Most of the working people only get one vacation a year. Oh, by the way, does our visiting mayor, or to the other sister cities, all six Glendale, the Glendale sister cities? And next thing I want to know is, what is a sister city? And why do we have them? And is our mayor going to visit all of them? And who's going to pick up the tab? I understand that he is going to pay for his own way, but when the other people come from the sister cities, I imagine somebody has to pick up their hotel bill, and I'm sure our city of Glendale picks up that bill and every other extent, spend. What does the City of Glendale and her population get from these visits and accept to get the vote of the foreign, foreign, or the different members of the city of Glendale that have ties into these different countries our mayor is using? The reason is quite obvious. Our mayor needs their vote to get elected again. Currently, our former adversaries are, have, well, all our new citizens of Glendale have all the advantages of Medicare, Social Security, and the benefits that we were set aside for the American workforce and for veterans. Our former countrymen that we knew now have in this city have not contributed anything. And also, I noticed at the end of the meeting that no matter who it is, who's the bad guy, he gets chastised by the city council, and he has no recourse to say anything back. But that's politics. And I guess I'm, that's about all I have to say. And I hope the City of Glendale can keep paying for all of our visitors. Thank you.
Is that it? Anymore?
Mr. C.R. Legal Senior.
I want to say something. Mr. Mayor, Councilman, and distinguished members of the council, thank you once again. I'm sorry about, oh, I'm sorry about, ooh.
Take it out, if you want. You can hold it if you want. Take it out.
Can I hold it?
Whatever is most comfortable for you.
Just leave it when you feel comfortable.
This is very comfortable. I feel at home. Thank you once again.
Do you speak with a microphone at home, sir?
Yes, I do, quite a bit. That's why I feel at home. Let me start off with a joke, since we got a good mood going on here. I was listening to one of the councilmembers talk about Kinko's. And I was surprised to find out, you know, Kinko's is one of the few companies that really have good service and is really needed in this community. And you know, most of their customers are non-racist, and you probably wonder, why are most Kinko customers non-racist? I'll tell you why. Because color doesn't matter. It's the price that counts. If you want copies, color doesn't matter. It's the price you want. So they care about the price. Now, if I can switch over to the previous conversation I had earlier about the need for investigation for home fraud, let me explain one point that I don't think Bagdajian could explain, because he doesn't have the background. But what he was talking about is, there is a legal process where lawyers can remove a state court proceeding from state court to federal court. It's a very known procedure. I've spoke with David Tillum and several lawyers, and they explained that there's a legal process where anyone can remove any civil case to federal court, especially if they have filed bankruptcy. And apparently, Bagdajian had filed bankruptcy. And so David Tillum had advised him he could remove his action from civil, state to federal. Once that's done, here's the kicker. Once that's done, there is no state jurisdiction. And it's different from having a bankruptcy where it stops jurisdiction. Bankruptcy temporarily stops all civil actions. But removal actually takes jurisdiction away from the state judge. Now, we know judges are the kings of the earth, and most kings do not like their power being taken. We understand that. But unfortunately, when the federal government does it, you got to bow down to it. And he doesn't know how to explain that in legal terms, but the Civil Code explains it, and the Federal Code explains it. It's Federal Rules of Bankruptcy Procedure 1927. You're welcome to read it. And it explains the process, explains the consequences of violations of federal removal, and it explains why state judges must stop. Now, what Bagdajian was talking about, Judge Doyle, in his infinite wisdom, he has point-blank said, "I'm refusing to honor federal removal statute." And that's what he's talking about. And most judges won't do that. A few will. And here's the consequences. There could be contempt charges brought, and a federal prosecutor could actually charge you with kidnapping and federal crime. They don't do it because they don't want to go to that extreme, because it's not necessary. But the technical definition of the law supports those type of criminal charges. For example, O.J. got charged with kidnapping, and the average citizen would say, "O.J. didn't kidnap." No, he didn't, in layman's terminology. But in the technical definition, and I've talked with several criminal attorneys, Mark Garagos, Attorney Marks, and they all agree that the technical sense of the law calls a kidnapping if you have no jurisdiction and you knowingly, deliberately go and remove someone by force from their home. That's a crime. And if it's not a crime, it should be. You should not perpetrate that kind of violence in a peaceful city like Glendale and set up those type of forces that are interacting with people feel they're being violated and raped. And it's unknown in most jurisdictions to do that. And it's akin to a judge coming from Georgia and saying, "Mayor, I want you to pay a parking ticket." You would say, "Wait a minute, you're a judge in Georgia. You have no jurisdiction over me, and if you force me to do anything, you're a criminal." Now, those are harsh words, but it takes harsh words sometime to shake people up, to realize your conduct is not innocent. Anyway, I don't want to belabor the point, but those of you who have legal background, and if you have the knowledge of the law, study the rule of law, and you would see that he's correct in that point. And his case number is C-10C01452. And you would see the judge is violating the law. I thank you for your time.
You.
I like holding the mic, though. Have a good evening.
I don't have any other cards. Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, Mr. Hooker, just like you know, the mayor didn't pay, Hooker, excuse me, he did not pay for either trips to Armenia or to South Korea. I've been invited to South Korea four or five times. I've chosen not to go yet. I've been invited to our sister city in Japan, Armenia, the two in Mexico, and South Korea, and Armenia. None have I gone to. Every single one wouldn't have been a penny out of the city's pocket if I had. I did represent the city in Tlalapacay a couple of years ago. No cost to the city. There's no political reason or rhyme for doing that, sister says, is to generate cooperation.
You can sit down.
Oh, thank you.
See, I was going to ask for permission. He was talking.
Oh, no, no, go right ahead. Sit down, sit down.
Thank you.
What we do is, after comments, then from the public, then the public all sits down, and we address different issues that came up.
Well, I have to say, I'm in favor of going to South Korea. That's beautiful.
Okay, no, that's not your turn, sir.
Thank you.
You can come back next week.
So there, Mr. Hooker, there's nothing there, political, whatever. It's build relationship between Glendale and other cities and other countries.
Cultural exchange.
Is that me?
You call it cultural exchange?
Yeah, it used to be cultural exchange. And I worked on creating a couple of sister cities, the bylaws and so on. And Margaret, I'm trying to figure out how anything in this city or anything could have ever been built without making noise, vibration, trucks, conversations, anything you can think of. I don't see how anything could have been built without doing that. There is limited amount. That center didn't use any heavy construction equipment at all. It used hand tamping to build the walls, rammed walls. I researched it again to make sure. There was no construction on Sunday. They said there was. Was a trash truck backing up to load things inside. There was nothing else going on down there. I didn't feel I had to go out during the week. I was there on May 24, during the construction phase. I didn't hear a lot of noise being made there, working inside. It's a very nice structure. So when people complain about noise, well, you wouldn't, we'd still have farmland out here if we didn't build. And what about a, an apartment building going up next to other apartment buildings? Takes a long time, lot of noise. They built that structure in six months. My house took eight months. So I think they did pretty good by the community. And it's the only Disney building that will be built next to residential, only one. The rest of their five phases are all internal. We're moved blocks away from any residential component at all. So, you know, I don't think they have too big a gripe there. I think that.
Thank you.
Did you pay anything, boy? Did the city pay a penny? Was I right?
You were right. And in terms of the visitors that come here, Mr. Hooker, there is a sister city association that raises funds and pays for any expenses that may be incurred by those people. So to assume that, I don't know where you get your information, I hope the lady next to you doesn't give it to you, but
Ooh, Margaret.
The funds are not paid from the city. And the purpose of the sister city relationship is to develop friendship. Friendship, respect, and tolerance towards other cultures. That's the whole point of this.
Mayor, how many groups have come to us from different countries, our sister cities? Countless numbers have come on their own dime, from every, even from China.
Exactly.
They've been here.
And, you know, I think unfortunately, the undertone, the undertone to the comments are that, are those of intolerance towards other cultures. And that's exactly what the sister city program tries to break down and tries to promote an appreciation of different cultures, whatever those cultures are. And there are certainly easier ways to get votes, Mr. Hooker, and anyone who's out there.
Tell me, tell me, tell me.
For my, I closed down my law practice for a week. I was away from my children, my wife, and my duties here at City Hall. So trust me, there are easier ways to get votes. And I'll, I'll be holding a seminar on that, Mr. Weaver, and give you the memo.
Great, great. Open to learning. Have a turn to learn.
Any other comments? No other comments?
I'll move, Mr. Mayor.
Well, you can admit it, I have a comment, too. I wanted to get to, and I just want to clarify something. It was an issue Margaret raised about the, sort of our public event ordinance that deals with, there's a cartoon soundtrack running in the background. Does that happen every time I talk, by the way? I never noticed it before.
That was a photographer in the background.
Oh, okay. Anyway, for example, police services and so on, any nonprofit, Margaret, can, any nonprofit can request a cosponsorship with the City of Glendale. And through our city ordinances, have a partial reduction in, in costs. But, I mean, any can come forward, some have availed themselves of that and some have not. They need to come forward, there's a process, and we had a couple the other week that we voted on. And we've approved some and we've not approved others. It just depends on the merit of it and how extensive the use is and what the, what kind of assets are involved. But I can tell you is, you know, having served on the board up in, up in the shopping park, we do more public events that probably there than any other area of the city. Matter of fact, I'm quite sure of that. And I think at this point, there are none that receive a discount. Maybe they should, they're a nonprofit, they could come forward and request it. But, I mean, no one's excluded. As long as they're a bona fide nonprofit, they all have the opportunity to come forward and make that request. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you. Your comments. Mr. Kasakian?
Mr. Mayor and Council, normally I wouldn't comment on something that was said during oral communications, it may not even be purview of the city clerk, but there was an ad hominem comment made to disparage a certain segment of this community because of an association of some of the people in this community with the former Soviet Union. And I think it was maybe cast a pall of maybe a lack of loyalty or patriotism or appreciation for the gifts that this country has given us. I happen to be a member of that community. I'm assuming Mr. Hooker was referring to Armenian-Americans. I was born in Boston, Massachusetts, and like many others, feel an intense loyalty for this country that has given my family the opportunity to live here and prosper here. And in all the discussions that have been made recently about veterans and the efforts of this council- of this council to provide them with adequate services as they're returning, I'd like to remind Mr. Hooker, and perhaps he doesn't know this piece of history, but one of the most decorated, highly decorated veterans in the American effort to fight the Japanese fascist forces during the Second World War was a gentleman by the name of Viktor Marakyan. Viktor Marakyan was from Fresno. He was a recipient of the Navy Cross, two Purple Hearts, and a number of Bronze Star for Valor in Battle. The fact that the movie Gung Ho, starring our own local hero, John Wayne, was based on his exploits. He was just a number of Armenian-Americans who proudly served this country and who continue to serve in our armed forces. So I hope that anyone watching doesn't think that just because someone lived in an occupied country, a country that was occupied by the Soviet Union, and they decide to seek freedom like countless have, that they're somehow less American now.
Thank you, Mr. Kasakian. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second. We're adjourned.